I think that was. That must be better because it's not. Looks like Carol's online and Steve's not quite set up and then we'll start.
I'm all right.
He's standing.
Close enough.
He's he's more ahead than we are.
Yeah, I'm just waiting. Yeah, I want to see you sit down so I can.
So I can make me stand up again.
All right, Steve, I'll join you.
I was just trying to be polite and let you.
I appreciate you.
Okay, good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board. It is January twenty second, Monday evening, two thousand and twenty four. I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty nine. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love looking at myself on TV.
No, I'm not.
It's my favorite thing to do. Okay. So our agenda is posted online and I hope that everybody who has joined us in person has signed the sheet out in the entry. If not, if you'd sign it on your way out, that would be helpful to our secretary. The first item on the agenda, public agenda tonight, is the Select Board Meeting Minutes of January eighth. This is item twenty four oh eight seven. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for.
January eighth.
January eighth. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Why, yes, Catherine, there is. I gave. I did this earlier tonight. I gave Angelica some typo kinds of corrections to make. I was really late. I did it at four or five o'clock tonight, so. If that's all right with you folks to have the amendment for the just the typos.
I have a quick, I have a quick note.
Yes, Carol.
Um, for the fire station little segment that we talked about, the emergency response, one thing that I suggested, if maybe it can just be jotted included, was the use of the sign at the fire station when people are not plugged in electronically. If it can just be like if there's warming or charging at the town hall, just if that sign can be utilized, just for people passing by can get the messages out.
Can you add that comment in, Angelica? Yes. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, all those. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor? And Carol? I need verbal.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next item of business, item twenty four dash zero eight eight warrants thirty one to thirty two. Why, I think that's me. So warrant. Thirty one had two state warrants and we had payroll. So warrant thirty one was in the amount of. Fifty six thousand, five eighty one and seventy seven cents. Payroll was twenty two thousand, six hundred ninety six dollars and nine cents, along with the state fees that are passed through to the state. The total will be seventy nine thousand, two seventy seven and eighty six cents. Items of interest. We made a payment to Anders Scoggan Bank for eleven. Where is it here? Eleven thousand dollars capital reserve. That was for. Transfer station capital. So was that the backhoe, Eric?
Yes.
Was that, was that our final payment?
Don't know. I can check on that.
Okay, I can't remember. I remember looking at it.
It's it's getting close, though.
We paid out three thousand, two ninety nine plus a little bit more to B and H video photo and video out of New York, and you are looking at the product of that. It is our new. Projector and the controls and the cables so that we have a much better, larger picture on the wall behind us for the audience in person. We paid a lot of bills to Central Main Power. We had some lube for, I believe. I don't know if it was for the backhoe. Maybe Matt remembers. To Central Petroleum Company. It was a whole lot of. We would. All the equipment.
Free stock.
A stock up. We paid twelve hundred dollars to cushion construction to fix a driveway where the water ran over the end of someone's driveway. The water on the town road took out a private driveway, so we repaired the driveway. We also paid. Nope, we didn't. And let's see, anything else there? Really anything of interest unless anybody had something they wanted to question about. Or ordinary expenses. So I would, I can make a motion to approve warrants thirty one and thirty two in the total amount of seventy nine thousand, two hundred seventy seven dollars and eighty six cents.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. We will move on to communications. We now have five minutes for any members of the Select Board to make general comments or notices to the public. Let's not all talk at once. All right, I guess we're quiet tonight. Moving on to staff communications, the town managers report we are not having tonight because we had a very thorough one two weeks ago.
I just have one update for the board that relates to important town business would be that's not on the agenda is we are moving forward as we do every year with the unpleasant task of. Moving forward with the foreclosure process. So folks that that do not or have not paid their taxes, we do have to initiate that process under state law in order to ensure that other taxpayers aren't carrying the burden on their behalf. So we do have a list of just eleven, which is pretty good. In years past, we fed upwards of twenty. So those notices will be going out, and I hate to say it, but most of these folks are frequent flyers. And so what usually happens is they get the notices, they come in, they pay, and I don't expect, and we will work very hard not to acquire any properties. But I just wanted to make you aware that that process was happening.
And what is the closing date for those?
Thirty days to forty five days from the notice. So it would be. I'd have to look back at the notice, but it's it's probably end of February, right in that range.
Okay, so about the end of February. Okay, thank you for that.
And also I want to point out, we have a very thorough code officer report in the packet that details activities over the past three months. And so I wanted to thank Chip for putting that together for us.
I liked the fact that he gave us some historical information. He still doesn't understand fiscal year, so he's looking at quarter four and we're in quarter two, but as long as he has dates, I could read it. So okay. But it was really interesting to see the variation from one year to another. And I appreciated the comment that he hasn't had any. Pushback on the increased rates. I think our rates were ridiculously low and people were smart enough not to say anything about them being too low.
Exactly right.
And when we realized it, we raised them and they're probably still very reasonable. So nobody seems to be having an issue. So. That was good. And and the little written anecdotal updates are appreciated. I think it's good for us to be able to speak intelligently about those kinds of things if people ask us. So really appreciate that. And if you can pass along my thanks.
Certainly will.
Okay. All right, boards, committees, commissions, and departments. Is anybody here for something that's not on the agenda? No. Okay, we have board and committee meeting minutes. And again, we're doing a great job with getting approved and draft minutes can submitted. So we had three sets from the age friendly committee, November, December, and January, two sets from cemetery, October and January. The planning board had two sets, December and January, rec committee from October, and the road committee from November. So thank you to everybody for that. They are all interesting reads. This is the time we have now reserved for public communications. We have ten minutes. If there's any member of the public present in the room or online who would like to speak. And again, nobody's chatty tonight, so we'll move on. We just recovered those eight minutes late we started.
I was not keeping track at all.
All business is allocated with thirty five minutes. So item twenty four dash oh four three, hear and consider an update on the fairgrounds project. Steve.
It's gonna be pretty short again. We had a really good public meeting last week and. That we, different members of the of the working group presented different aspects of the project and Regina Leonard was there and answered a few questions. We got some good questions from folks in the audience, you know, and I feel like we're really. At a pretty good spot with that phase of the project, which is not the end of the project, of course, that we're gonna have to move on to like find a way to to build it and pay for it. So that's the next job. But, you know, we feel like we're really close with the. Having what we need for a final plan, you know.
That's great. I'll note that the entire select board was physically present in the room, which I think was a great sign of support to the committee. And I think I counted five or six people in the room that were not actively involved either. On the select board or on. On the select board or on the working group. Uh, so we didn't have a whole lot of. Input from the community at large, which either means they're not interested or you're doing a pretty good job, so uh they didn't have a need to come.
I'd like to think it was the second because, you know, the first meeting we had, there was a lot of people there and a lot of interest, and I think we responded well. To the request. They had had some good suggestions, so I think the working group responded well to that. I I will say that. I said this at the, at the meeting, but the, that working group has been a phenomenal group of people. They work super hard. And working through consensus the way that we did um was a way to make sure everybody's voice was heard and I. Am not a big fan of committees in general, um, but I'm, I was super pleased with the the work that they did.
Well, and we appreciate all the work you've put into that, you and Jerry, who are officially members of the committee.
Especially Jerry.
Just a couple of things. I I was impressed with all of the committee members who went at length to do a very comprehensive presentation. And just to emphasize, I think everybody thinks the, the ball fields and the basketball are for kids. I see especially the basketball as something for every age. I can see a grandpa out there showing his grandson to dribble and a. A mom, you know, teaching her daughter to shoot. I mean, I, it's, it's all ages and a lot of opportunity for us to be seen. As a family-friendly town. Um, I do, there was some talk about buffers. And trees, and I just hope there's a lot of visibility of what's going on because I think that shows us that um. We have a lot for families or we're investing in families and that's our future in Reed Field when. The um company has a plan said, you know, the majority sixty percent are over sixty years old or something of our um town. The new families are gonna be very important to us, and I think it'll be a really good showcase that um. We're investing in things for kids and family that have a safe place to hang out and and have some memories. Um, and then um. Just another two cents to maybe put some handicap parking down by one or two spots. Um, for people down by the ballparks because I think it's gonna be a challenge um for some of the elderly to get down there to enjoy watching the games. And it seems like that might be able to be accommodated if if possible.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on to twenty-four dash oh four-four here and consider an update on the Church Road sidewalk project. That would be Eric.
Yeah, so another short report. Um, so we, our skill's still scheduled for the six-thirty PM February twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Public hearing that was rescheduled from January, uh, so that is still on. The engineers um have submitted their um preliminary design proposal. Uh, for uh the DOT to review, and that is currently under review by the Maine Department of Transportation, so. Uh, we should get that back uh sometime this week or next. Uh, and then we'll have everything ready uh and in place for the public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Uh, twenty-four dash oh four-seven select board action item reporting. I'll start. I didn't do anything this time. Um, but since Paul is here, I will publicly thank her. I did this last time. Um, Paula, thank you very much for having a meeting with Eric and I to talk about. More work for you to do. Um, yeah, it was, I think it was a great schedule. We came up with you or I listened to you and. Uh, that's exactly what we put forth, that we would do things on the terms we talked about, and I appreciate your willingness and that of the planning board to look at things like that, so thanks. Um, Steve. Why don't you do the Miranda Cook one? I don't think it's changed, right?
No, not really. I had tried to get ahold of Steve Vos to just get a feel for how many people were walking. They had started the. Uh, walking uh Monday through Friday at the, at the um school, but I haven't got, he wasn't in when I went in, so. I'll, I'll find out, like, I'm really curious what the numbers are.
But it did go out on the town website.
Yep, we got.
Went out as an alert.
It's a good, yeah, really responsible.
I think the weight room did also, right?
Yep.
So that's great.
Yeah.
Um, so Dave?
We actually did stuff this week.
They did a lot of stuff. They were busy.
Also fill us in.
Sean's probably better than me, but.
Well, you started, so go ahead.
Well, we, we met with the, the library uh committee on Wednesday night, I think that it was, and uh. Gave our idea about the. Having somebody coordinate all the. The programming and involve them in it and the possibility of maybe even an office space there. They were a little reluctant at first. We, we explained to them that we don't want any control over any of that and and um. So I think it would be an asset to them to use as a, as a tool more than anything. They would keep their own programs and um. Just have this enhance what they're doing down there. And the same thing with um Thursday night, we were at the. The uh rec committee and explain essentially the same thing to them. And uh, I, I think one of the things that. People are gonna feel with this position is it's, it's like, oh, well, there's another expense for the town, but I don't. I don't see it that way. I think there's, there's enough revenue to come back with it. And in, not to mention what it would take off the town office down here in the staff and Eric. I think it'd be a, a, a good benefit, you know, almost self, self. Um, self-reliant. With the funds.
Yeah, big, big, that was it. Big takeaways were people initially thought uh the thought of a rec director slash program, however, we're kind of. Looking at that and how we can support that was to take away ownership of those. Current boards and committees, but that's not it. It's to be a supplemental support outside of the town. I hate that I keep seeing myself that big. Don't look behind you. I'm like a squirrel. Every time I look at Dave, I see myself and it's not good.
I'm like, you should look at how big.
No, it was Catherine's fault. But yeah, so that was a key thing is we're not, th- th- there's nothing about this position that's taking away from anything that's currently happening at town. It's really to. To support what's happening in town and to give it more structure and, you know, just a place for it to hold home.
I think more exposure as well.
Yeah, just all those. I mean, when we sat uh. Both of our meetings took an hour. We sat with both commissions, committees for an hour, listening to. How we could maybe mirror and support them. And we just kept coming up with more ideas, you know, the longer we sat there, so um. I really hope it's something when we put all the thoughts on paper, people see and go, I can't believe we have volunteers doing that much. And how we could maybe help do it better. Um, so yeah, it was really good, really good conversations.
Thanks for doing it. Yeah.
Do you have more to do? Is, have you met now with the folks you needed to meet with and gotten the information you need?
Yeah, we, we took it as we met with the folks that offer programming currently, so you know. If there's someone we haven't thought of, um, you know, we were gonna meet with Dennis, but Dennis came and presented about Heritage Day, so. He took that one off our plate and, you know, so anybody that provides a programming aspect, that's kind of what we targeted, so. If we forgot something.
Have you talked to age friendly yet?
Nope.
You probably don't both need to go, but that might be a good discussion to have, um, because they, they do provide programming and they're actually getting ready to do their.
Their reteal you.
So I think that would be a good one to tap into.
Yep, thank you.
Um, so you folks, you two will put together some sort of a report for Eric for budget times.
More information coming to, especially with like the, the rec program, so people get an idea of what it entails. Cause there's way more to it than, than I think meets the eye.
And when do you need that? When is it scheduled for on the budget meetings?
Uh, well, I think the, the, the initial presentation of the budget is actually Wednesday, um, but.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
That's awesome.
Yeah, but um, we have a couple of months to sort it out and uh I think the, the, the placeholder of a number is easy. Um, the hard part, the important part is the justification and the rationalization around that. I think that can happen over the next, you know, four, four, four weeks or so.
Okay.
And also where the money's coming from, because there's already quite a bit of money in the budget that's used for this. It's just not called that.
Yes, yeah, and I'll talk about that a little bit with the budget, but yeah. Yep.
Okay, all right, that's great, right? Awesome job, you guys. Glad you finally were able to get your meetings in and we're looking.
No storms, no storms last week.
I wasn't emphasizing finally.
It's okay, it's okay.
All right, I'll take my, all right, anyway. Um, Carol, did you have any update on yours or you've been out of town, so?
I just slept town uh Saturday, so I'm good. Um. I met with, I'm gonna start the um. I think it's gonna be small business showcase or shop local showcase or if anybody has a snappy name for a page in the messenger, I'd be uh. Up to that. Um, but I'm gonna start by introducing the concept and inviting people to let us know if they're interested in being posted. I did meet and our first business is going to be Linda and Warren Barter with Barter Farms. Which is on the loose road, who's was a dairy farm for twenty years and is now sells. Very. Delicious meat, um, frozen whole sides of beef. Um, they've had a local business for a very long time and I think they're hidden. So that's our first one. Um, but then also inviting people that if they want to be part of that in coming months to let us know and then we'll. When it be turned into spring and summer, get a little bit more seasonally involved. Um, and also encourage businesses to. Update their information with the town and also um drop off business cards or brochures if they want to be included in the. Welcome packets that we're handing out to new um residents. Um, this is another way to get their name out. Um, and I hope to get that. Done for the messenger by Wednesday.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to item twenty-four dash zero eight four. Consider commercial hauler permits for the Reed Field transfer station. I believe there were two included in this packet. We did two last week.
It should just be one, I think, but let me double check. Just one. For. Uh, Jimmy Simmons, Simmons Trucking. Um, and so he did submit his application along with all the required paperwork and payment. Uh, so I would recommend uh approval of this commercial hauler permit, uh, and that would be one outstanding, which we expect to get um early February.
There it is. So we have a permit in the packet. It was submitted, completed, and they paid their fee. Yep, so all we need in the insurance liability policy is there, so all we need is a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application for. What is it? Simmons truck, well, is that all I need? Okay.
Oh, second.
You're doing great.
It's easy enough.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the application for commercial hauler permit for Simmons Trucking. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'll just make a note. I think we paid. For transfer station haul tipping at. What's the place in Norridge what called?
Oh, um, Crossroads. Is it Crossroads?
Waste.
Waste management. Um, for Archie's who takes their compactor truck up there and they have not been giving us slips. They've just been giving us a bill. And so I said to Eric, I, since I'm the one reviewing the warrant, that I would feel more comfortable if they were again providing their tickets that they get from waste management. It's not that I don't trust them, but it's an audit thing. We try to keep track of everything and it seems that should be one of those things, so. Alrighty, uh, number twenty-four dash zero eight-five. Consider a potential special town meeting to address overlay zoning requests. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and think that maybe that's why Paula's here, so she can give us information if anybody has questions. And this is on page twenty-nine in our packet. Um, was it really, I thought, well-written and thorough. Uh, report from Paula about what has happened, the sequence of events and uh where we're going forward now. Paula, do you want to give us just a brief synopsis of that? For the record? We did talk about this at our last meeting, am I correct, folks?
We did, yeah, cursory, um, but things have happened, so.
I hadn't uh planned to, to really do a full presentation on this.
You don't need to.
Because the uh, the memo was, is quite self-explanatory, I think, but um. In summary, uh, the planning board accepted two applications for rezoning under the commercial industrial. District provision of the ordinance um in the fall. Uh, we found both of those applications complete in November. And uh, the ordinance requires as part of the process for the CID rezoning. That a public hearing be held uh within thirty days of finding applications complete. So we held that hearing in December and then the planning board's first meeting in January uh was the meeting that we designated for deliberation. On those applications. Um, we considered all four of the standards that are laid out in the ordinance and I listed those in the memo. And ultimately determined that we believe that both of the applications had met those standards and the other requirements that are included in the ordinance. Um, and uh, in both cases, it was a unanimous vote uh to recommend to the select board. Um, that you move those to town meeting uh with one condition. And I had fashioned a condition that is also outlined uh in the ordinance. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I think the only question we might or thing that we discussed at our last meeting was. What it is we're actually going to town meeting to vote on, and I want to make sure that publicly we're clear on this. We're not voting on approving a solar farm or approving storage units. We are voting on the expanding the commercial industrial district. For these projects that the planning board decides on.
That, that's an important point. I'm glad you raised that because I think, you know, we've talked to a number of people and that seems to be, if there's going to be a point of confusion about this process, that is it. And uh, what this does, um, the ordinance sets up a process whereby someone can request. That a parcel or parcels of land in Reed Field be designated as commercial industrial districts. And those are the uh, the districts in which um, a party can. Construct or use structures in excess of five thousand square feet for commercial, industrial or infrastructure purposes. Um, so what is in front of you, uh, those two requests for CID rezoning. Would only designate the parcels uh that they identified as now being in a commercial uh industrial district. And uh, the solar farm itself, for example, would uh, if it was approved at town meeting, if that rezoning is approved by the town meeting. Both of those projects, including the solar project, would have to come back before the planning board for full site review. So it would be our regular process. We would look at that solar farm. And apply all of the site review criteria to that project. And go through the process that we normally go through with any project in town. So this is step one. Uh, it's the rezoning that would accommodate that kind of proposal. And then we would move on to a regular site review process.
Okay. And you have already found that those applications are complete.
We found them complete uh in November. Um, we then held the hearing in December. Deliberated in January and specifically went through each of those standards in January.
Okay. Uh, so there's, so at this point, the projects are not approved, but will be. But will come back to the planning board for approval if the districts are approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and I, you know, I think one of the other things that makes it um a bit confusing is that. It's not a clear, bright line between this rezoning process and the site review process. There's information that we uh received from the applicants and that we discussed during the rezoning discussion. Um, that will come up again during site review. Um, but during the site review process, the planning board will have the ability to impose conditions. Uh, we might require an applicant to modify their plan in order to commit to compliance with the site review criteria. So a lot, a lot can happen during, during that process.
And is there an estimated time period for what a review like that typically takes? Is that like? One meeting or is it like six months or a year?
Um, it, it depends completely on the individual applicants and the quality of their applications. Um, you know, using uh, using the solar project as an example, they've already done all of the work to put together a site review application. Uh, and so, um, and the planning board has seen that. We've not considered it under site review. But we have, we have seen it. We're familiar with. But we have, we have seen it, we're familiar with the content, and we did talk about portions of it during the rezoning discussion. So, um, you know, I would expect that as soon as um. If the project is approved at town meeting, we'd be able to proceed uh shortly after that and look at it under the site review criteria. Um, it. It can take as little as two meetings or many meetings, you know, depending again on the quality of the applications and what the issues are.
Great. Um, and I guess the last question that we've talked about is the need to do this now as opposed to waiting till June. This is kind of more for the select board, in June, we don't have a on-the-floor town meeting, so we would have to. Uh, try and figure out how to do this. On with secret ballot vote with a lot more explaining, and it doesn't give people as much opportunity then to ask questions. Where this is the first time we've come across this situation in town. Um, it seems like having it on the floor meeting would be better for the general public. Um, and it will also allow the applicants to have their project possibly move forward much quicker than if we wait until. The middle of June to make any progress, by the time the planning board gets done with it, they probably wouldn't be building this. Coming season, so we're really holding people up. So, does that seem reasonable? As an explanation.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, explanation. Um, so. If we don't have any further questions for Paula, you don't have to stay at the podium. Um, so now we need to decide if we are happy with the warrant language that um Eric has suggested. With the specifics there, and has this gone to legal for review yet?
It has, um, I'm still waiting on a on a response, um, so what I would like to suggest is that if. I I think that the language is generally in the right format, um, that it meets the requirements of of the um. The ordinance and the law, uh, I would hope that we could get um approval to move forward with those articles and that warrant. Uh, subject to any final uh edits from the town attorney. Uh, that would allow us, i- if that happened, uh, we could move forward with a um. A special town meeting, uh, really anytime in February or March, but I would recommend February. Um, what I have uh discussed and what was presented in that draft is February twenty-seventh. With a public hearing uh being on the thirteenth and a uh notice for that hearing happening on the fifth. Uh, and so that meets all those statutory requirements of uh when um everything has to happen for a a meeting like this. Also gives us enough time to prepare, um, if we uh were to approve um. A um a warrant at the next meeting, it would push things back a bit, it's not the end of the world. Uh, but I do think that we're kind of struggling between a few different uh obstacles, one uh being the um. Voting on Tuesday, the. Feb, um, March fifth uh for primaries, um, and we don't want to over overload voters too much. Uh, but also if we get too far into March uh or into April, then we might as well just wait until June, um, as far as um. Uh, this going forward, so I think that we've we've talked about it a few times, uh, I think that we're in a good position. Uh, and so I would, um, I would like to see this move forward. Uh, with with the uh with the warden warrant as drafted, subject to any final legal edits, uh, and then we can. Get the notice out and and take all of those actions. Uh, if there's something sizable that comes up with the legal review, uh, I'd probably ask for a special select board meeting so you could review it and and sign it. Uh, but I think that um the scope is is very much there, uh, the only language I think might need a tweak would be. Something around whether this is a formal change to the land use ordinance, or whether this is just a zoning change. Um, I think it's self-evident, but uh that's the one area that I'm not a hundred percent certain about what the attorney might come back with for recommendations, so. If that sounds reasonable.
Thank you, um, Carol?
I just have a couple things, so, um. We're gonna be voting on three different articles and. That vote is going to be public, right, like a show of hands, can you explain? How this can be, and the one thing that I guess I was assuming was gonna be at the. Um, Miranda Cook High School in our town, but it's at Kinsel School, and I wonder if that's because it is a voting activity, and we don't wanna. Confuse people by having a vote at a different um location, so I guess. I was just surprised it was at Kinsel, but I believe that kind of makes sense, and also that it it's not able to be included. Um, I forgot we had a vote on March fifth, so it's too late to include that in that. Vote on March fifth?
So, uh, I can answer a couple of those, um, so there are two different elections, so one is a a federal. Right, it's federal election?
Federal primary, yeah.
Federal primary, um, and that's that's by secret ballot, and so we can't hold a. Town meeting at the same time as we're holding a secret ballot meeting. Um, so, and there are two. One's municipal and one is federal, um, we're doing it at Kinsel School because that's our designated voting spot for Reed Field. And that's what's registered with the state as our voting spot, um, so we stayed with that, and the third question was.
Um, how we vote, is it like a show of hands, or?
I think it's our choice whether we do by show of hands or by a a piece of paper.
Yeah, we we have a couple of different options, um, I think most common and the simplest would be a show of hands. Uh, but uh oftentimes with special town meetings or or even on-floor town meetings. Uh, if there's any uncertainty, um, you can have a a, you can divide the room and have people stand on either side and then count. Um, but there there's lots of different ways to do it, uh, but but paper, um, paper, uh, ballot is one option where you write yes or no. Um, and then you can tally those, but so there's a few different ways to do it, but I would, I would suggest the uh that we start with the the cleanest, which would be the show of hands.
So do you answer everything, Carol?
I think so, thanks, and I guess just to um reemphasize that it's not a vote of whether we want either of these projects, but just approving the land use ordinance. That's that's big, I do just don't want people to think they're gonna be. Voting up or down one of these projects, as they've been in process a long time with lots of discussions, so. Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone present, Sean?
I just wanna make sure that um select board do not have, aren't, it's not mandatory that they attend this date, right?
Nope, uh, and actually, it's an interesting point, I mean, thi- this is, uh, I think Catherine was here when we used to do. Uh, a secret or on-floor town meeting, but nobody else, nobody else has been, uh, a- and so these are all valid and 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 great questions, but no. Um, with with on-floor town meetings, um, as with a lot of the elections. Um, you don't necessarily want the select board front and center, you want them there to really observe. Um, but the 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 job of the moderator is to run the meeting, the job of the moderator and and the and the election staff are to make sure that things happen smoothly. Um, you might make a make a statement, um, but it would be typically limited, uh, and really, uh, in the context of um. More often than not, just speaking as a citizen, but uh I think with something like this, uh, I would expect we would have a a brief presentation. Um, by the two applicants, uh, I'm talking like five minutes apiece, something like that, just to summarize what's been discussed. Hopefully, and and reviewed hopefully beforehand, uh, because we do have to have a a formal hearing. For that specific purpose, so I did mention uh the um. Yeah, the thirteenth, um, as as a date for a hearing, a- and that's the time that now that the select board has decided to move this forward. The baton got passed, now you're doing this part, um, and then they they have the opportunity to present and and. You know, give the public all the information they may need, uh, we'll definitely record that, we'll put it on YouTube, all of those things. Um, and so, uh, I think that even though this is on floor, we can still have much the same public communication that we've had in the past.
So, so back to Sean's question, we are not required to be there, we will not be sitting front and center on the Diaz, Diaz, whatever.
Yeah, no, you're in the audience like everybody else.
For this one. So, um, if. You're, we're comfortable with this, I would entertain a motion, and if not, I would entertain whatever your questions are.
I'd like to make a motion, approve special town meeting warrant for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, pending our legal review.
A second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Eric, is that broad enough for what you asked?
It it is, yeah, it is.
Um, so we're not talking about substantial changes, we're talking about minor changes.
Yes.
Okay, and so will we be signing this tonight, so you have the signature page?
Yeah, we'll do that, um, and then we'll move forward from there.
All right, if we approve it.
If we approve it.
Do you have any other questions, Carol?
No, I'm good.
Okay, uh, so seeing no more comments, all those in favor? And Carol?
Yes.
Um, and I keep asking Carol, just for point of clarification to everyone who's listening or in the room. Uh, when we have a meeting that's on Zoom, uh, it has to be a voice vote by the participating number. Uh, so it passes, and we will pass that around for signatures, and now we'll move on, and let me say that we are way ahead of schedule. We're doing great, everybody. Uh, we are up to new business, so. Five, yep, we're fifteen minutes ahead of time. Maybe we won't have to extend the meeting tonight, you never know. Always hope, and Matt's getting ready, we're on to twenty-four dash zero eight nine, thanks Paula. Consider replacement of the F-five-fifty maintenance truck, we have twenty minutes. We have a really nicely done report uh that gives us details, facts, information. Um, and opinion and suggestions, so I guess we'll turn it over to Matt and Eric as needed.
Thank you, so the the report that's included in your packet is is nearly complete, I was waiting for a few more prices and a few more specifications. That came in uh earlier this afternoon, so the report that I have in front of me is is a hundred percent complete. Um, dealers that didn't get back to us with quotes, uh, I made note of, there was only two dealers that didn't get back to us. Uh, at uh probably a total of seven or eight that we we contacted. With that being said, Eric does have a copy of my final proposal, so if anyone's interested, uh, he can provide that to you. So essentially, uh, to get down to it, uh, everyone knows that our current truck is not the pinnacle of reliability. Um, I don't think it really ever has been the pinnacle of reliability, going back. In the maintenance records, which we have all of them from new, um, going back to about ten thousand miles, the the truck started to. Uh, present problems that a truck of this class and category should not have presented. I would say over the last two years, those problems have cascaded to the point of. High cost and and substantially affecting our reliability and our our dispatch with the truck. Everyone's familiar with all the exhaust components that were replaced, the def tank, the pumps that were replaced, um, which is kind of specific to the diesel. And how we operate the truck, um, and whether that was the right choice to buy. In two thousand sixteen, I I wasn't here, so I'm not going to to justify it. But. Over the last two years, the truck has just. Had a cascade of 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 these issues, and most recently, we replaced all three power steering lines, which all failed. With note to that, um, we've been fortunate in the winter time that this truck hasn't failed. Uh, during a snow event, and the last two and a half weeks when the truck's been out of surface waiting for power steering lines and ten hours of labor to replace them. Um, we were unavailable for three plowable snows, which we needed to use our contractor. Who does a great job, but still I don't think provides the the level of service that we can for these facilities with with our own truck. So, um, with with that being said, and looking at a a replacement for the truck and looking at a replacement. Somewhat in kind with a gasoline engine, um, so what we were looking for is something that. Gives us the ability to carry the same payload, is the same size, isn't bigger, isn't smaller. So essentially, um, right now, our current truck is a nineteen thousand five hundred pound truck. Um, the trucks we're looking at are a nineteen thousand pound truck, which is the most you can option with a a gas engine. Really, this doesn't give us any real change in payload, the diesel engine weighs about, or the diesel equipped trucks with all the exhaust components are about five hundred pounds more. Than the gasoline truck, so really, we're not losing any capacity with a with a gasoline truck. Um, but we're we're getting rid of the the Achilles' heel of of. The the diesel exhaust treatment and that component and all that, um. Issues that we've had prior. Um, so, we looked at Chevy, we looked at GMC, those trucks stop at fourteen thousand pounds. Where this comes into play for us is once again payload capacity, we run a two-and-a-half cubic yard polycaster, which is our material spreader off the back of the truck. Uh, that requires a fifteen thousand pound gross weight, so unfortunately GMC and Chevy, uh, if we wanna get into that weight category. Um, the price increases exponentially, and and most of those trucks are diesel-powered, which we're trying to stay away from. Uh, so, going back to what is uh available to us. To to replace this truck and give us the same capacity with hopefully more reliability, it comes down to Ford and Dodge. Dodge offers the Ram fifty-five hundred, excuse me, and Ford offers the uh F-four-fifty and F-five-fifty. So on the Ford side, um, the F-four-fifty grosses at sixteen thousand five hundred pounds. The F-five-fifty with the gas engines nineteen thousand pounds. Um, the price difference when you build the trucks online is pretty insignificant when you build them to the specs we want. Um, so you're looking at a two thousand three hundred dollar difference, and you're losing two and a half thousand pounds of payload capacity. Um, so it just doesn't really make sense, um, looking at the Dodge line of trucks, which I don't have any experience with. Is the Ram fifty-five hundred, uh, nineteen thousand pound truck, gasoline engine, slightly smaller displacement. Um, more horsepower, a little bit less torque than the F-five-fifty with the gas engine. Um, with that being said, the Dodge trucks come with a uh slightly lower capacity electrical system. We currently have a high-capacity electrical system with our F-five-fifty, uh, all of our components are electric, are electric over hydraulic, all our lights obviously are electric, so. Um, we're looking for a truck similar to what we have, which will come from the factory, dual batteries, high amp alternator or a dual alternator. And from Dodge, um. They they don't offer a truck with a dual battery, they offer a truck with a dual alternator and a three hundred amp. Amp hour alternate, or just a single alternator, excuse me, but with that being said, um, when I. Once again, look at the Dodge, um, the prices are higher. And the order times are four to nine months to order those trucks, uh, there's one truck in stock in in Waterville, which I believe we are quoted around sixty thousand dollars for. Um, it's really not the truck we want, it has a lot of things we don't want on it, and it has a lower capacity electrical system. Um, so, once again, I'm back to the the two thousand twenty-four F-five-fifty. No dealer in the state has any truck in stock that fits our specification, so the truck would have to be ordered. Order times for a two thousand twenty-four F-five-fifty are somewhere between twelve to fourteen, up to sixteen weeks. So we're looking at three to four months to order an F-five-fifty, it's a base model F-five-fifty with an upgraded electrical system. Some simple things like a backup camera that we don't have now. And just a few small add-ons that are similar to our current truck. But, uh, going through pricing, I think I believe, I think I received prices from. Ford is six Ford dealers, the lowest price we received was from a Rundle Ford, which interestingly enough. Our last F-five-fifty came from a Rundle Ford, uh, and they're at fifty-five thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars, uh, that's. Coming off an MSRP of sixty-two one-two-five, um, so they're significantly lower than any other dealer in the area. There are a few dealers that offer trucks, uh, that they will get out of a pool and they'll send to like Breaking Clutch in Massachusetts. For completion and give us a total cost. Those prices for those two dealers, one would be Row Ford out of Auburn, and they're at a hundred and one thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. And then Ripley and Fletcher Ford, which is out of Paris or South Paris, they're at ninety-five uh one-three-eight. And those are completed trucks, which would still a a four-month wait time. With all that being said, uh, my recommendation, uh, if we do decide to purchase a special order. Uh, F-five-fifty with a three-to-four month lead time for the truck. I contacted several uh outfitters in the area, Bangor Truck Equipment, HP Fairfield, as well. Uh, as a quote from uh Breaking Clutch in Massachusetts. The lowest price that I received from the outfitter that I. Personally liked the most in terms of the information they gave me and their availability when I had questions for them. Was Bangor Truck Equipment in Bangor, Maine. And they were at thirty-five thousand nine twenty. Which includes a very similar dump body to what we have. A new polycaster and a new nine foot straight blade plow. And that includes. The entire completion for the truck electrical as well as, as well as lighting. And other prices listed were two to four thousand dollars more for, for completion. And once again, to order the dump body twelve to fourteen weeks. So once the dump body in the truck would be in at the dealer and in at the outfitter. They said only three days to complete the truck in about a week to get it in the shop. The other thing that I would consider is an extended warranty for. The truck, considering the issues we've had with the current F five fifty. I was quoted from a Rundle Ford, who would be the lowest priced dealer for the truck. The price for the extended warranty is slightly high at six thousand dollars and it covers the truck up to seventy-two months and seventy-five thousand miles, whichever occurs first. So that would obviously take effect after the bumper to bumper warranty from the factory expired and after the powertrain warranty from the factory expired. So it's something to consider, looking at the issues we've had with our truck. I hate to use the word lemon. I think it's somewhat of a lazy term, but. That, the, the truck is a lemon. The, the amount of problems that, the amount of problems we have with it, just it, it, it shouldn't occur on a, on a thirty-five thousand mile super duty. And whether the truck was built on a Friday or Monday morning, I, I don't know, but it's, it's cost a lot of money and put us out of service a lot. So my recommendation would be an F five fifty special ordered for us, completed at Bangor Truck Equipment. The final prices that I came up with today. Purchasing the truck from a Rundle Ford, completing at Bangor, ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. And if you wanted to add a seventy-two month. Seventy-five thousand mile extended warranty, that price rises to ninety-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Can you just repeat those last three things? How many months, miles?
Yes. So the extended warranty from a Rundle Ford.
Yep.
Was quoted as seventy-two months or seventy-five thousand miles, whichever occurs first. Each visit. Comes with a hundred dollar deductible, but that's bumper to bumper on the chassis.
Right. That doesn't include the sander or the plow.
No, and that's, that's a good point. Dave, because some of the, some of the dealers get their trucks from a pool, they go to an outfitter. Breaking Clutch in Massachusetts was one that we saw two or three dealers quoting us for. And to be honest with you, if we have an issue with it and the truck was completed in Massachusetts. I would rather go to Bangor or, or like Skowhegan where the last truck was completed. They've done work on it before. So to have a, a relationship with them to me would be beneficial.
Okay, so that, that warranty was different than the one that came through Casco Bay?
Yes, and Costco's truck, they were the second lowest in price at fifty-nine, five. Plus they were what, four thousand three hundred for the extended warranty. Slightly higher miles, but for us, it's going to be a, a time and service. It's going to be.
Right. And our truck that's now eight years old has how many miles on it?
It's just shy of thirty-five thousand.
So the mileage isn't, we'll be using it based on longevity, not on miles, most likely.
Since I've been here, I've put sixty-five hundred miles on it. That's it.
Yeah. So it'll be the seventy-two months that we're looking at.
Yes. And did you want the two figures for the, the final cost?
Yep. Yeah. And so this year, we, we've spent how much on the truck repairs, including the latest?
Well, the latest one is probably just over fifteen thousand. Staggering number.
The latest bill or the, for the year?
Cumulative bill. We were at fourteen something and then we added five hundred just this week. So with those few hydraulic lines or the brake lines.
Power steering?
Power steering lines, yeah.
So that's this fiscal year?
This fiscal year. The carrying cost of this vehicle, and Matt didn't hammer on it too much. He, he's concerned about reliability and his job is using it. But the, the, the cost of this thing has been escalating and it's, I think it's just a, a liability. So I certainly support the recommendation to replace this, looking at some, some options for how to do that. We did already have this year in the budget, six thousand to replace the polycaster that we have. So that's a, a little bit of a, of a, of a savings there, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. But we also. Have in reserve seventy-eight thousand dollars in our vehicle reserve and a small five fifty-eight hundred and change in our lease reserve. But what I would recommend is that we would, because you don't typically lease accessory equipment. I would recommend that we look at a three to five year lease for the chassis and. Upfitting, you know, body, I guess, what?
Dump body?
Dump body. There we go. I, I don't do vehicles much, so, but the numbers I can work on. But I'd recommend leasing that piece on a three to five year term. We can usually get quite favorable terms from our local banks. And then I would recommend the, the purchase outright of the, of the plow package sander. And then if the board is interested in that warranty, also that. So I think that we could accomplish that. It wouldn't overstretch our equipment reserve and we would essentially be replacing. The, the lease payment, we paid our last lease payment on the pickup truck this year. So we would essentially be rolling into another one. A further recommendation would be that when we, if, if this moves forward and when we sell the old truck. We should be able to get fifty to fifty-five thousand for it pretty handily. I'd recommend that money go into the lease reserve. So we can then use that to pay off a portion of that lease and minimize the impact on taxpayers. I, I, bottom line on this, what I'm seeing is that we are looking between thirty and forty thousand. In a, in new spending, but at, it doesn't take long at ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year repairs to. To, to show that the carrying cost of the current, current truck, it's just a bad value. We're much better off purchasing a new vehicle that would last. Hopefully the eight to twelve that we had originally budgeted for this one. But that, that's all I have for, for, for math and recommendations on, on, on how to finance this. But have you taken any questions? As well as.
Sean's been itching.
Okay.
Well, I just really, I want to know if we really need a truck that big. I mean, I. Six, Matt, how long have you been here? Two years now? Two and a half? Two-ish? Two. So sixty-five hundred miles. I can't imagine there's been that much dumping in that time. Would it maybe more cost efficient to do something like an F three fifty with an eight foot bed? You know, that does a two cubic yard spreader and we have a dump trailer. The, you know, I just, I just want, I don't know.
Be a hundred times cheaper to maintain. If you bought the.
I just don't understand we needn't that big.
The tires are three times as much money on a five fifty as they are a three fifty. Everything, everything on it is cheaper on an F three fifty. And I, I don't know if that's a, maybe that's, you would probably know the municipal laws better than I, but. That, an F three fifty duly would handle that sander and plow, no problem. It doesn't matter really what the GBW is, you can register it for whatever. And the DOT laws go within, it, that, the, what's on the door doesn't matter. It goes by width of the tires and, and ground pressure is what it boils down to. So those are, I, I don't know the answers to those questions. Maybe you have to abide by the GBW on the door. I don't know. But I will tell you, I know for a fact that, that truck to replace parts on, everything is more expensive than a three fifty.
Absolutely.
The other question that I would have is the, is the sander, is it time to replace that?
It is. It is.
Pulling out.
Yep.
That's why we had the six thousand in reserve for it.
Yes, of course.
And that was scheduled to replace any?
Yeah, that was scheduled for replacement. And we, we budgeted at six and it, it came in at eight. So that, that surprised me. Boy, the prices have been going, so.
And do you, do we need a gravel body? Or would a landscape body work just as well?
I think a gravel body for the amount of stuff we, we do on the side of the roads. In addition to build a box for the, the chipper, something that is.
Well, that's what I meant, what I meant by a landscape body would be flatbed, you can remove the sides, but it has it dumped.
Yep.
So you could still even put, put five yards.
I mean, we, we, we do, we do carry a lot of gravel. You know, I would say three to four yards at a time. And to be able to dump that, this truck would be outfitted with, with like a coal chute door in the back. Back right side, the curb side of the tailgate, which is something we don't have.
Cost wise, isn't much different. I was just curious if that would be an easier option. If you haul and brush things that aren't normal.
It hauls everything. Yeah, it hauls everything.
And what do we haul typically with our truck?
What do we haul in the, in the winter? The sander is installed completely. That's it. It's hard mounted in there, strapped down. I would say in the spring. And fall would be mostly three quarter inch crust gravel, rip rap and then with the chipper now that we're, we're chipping into the back of it.
And do we trailer the chipper?
Behind the five fifty.
And how do we move the? Bobcat around. Looking at you, maybe remember that. I don't know why.
We, we, we don't, we don't trailer the bobcat anywhere right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how does it get, so it's at the transfer station?
Yes.
And so we drive it down the road to get to the sidewalk?
Yes.
Is that safe?
No.
Would it be safer to haul it on the truck?
Is it, is it safe? Well, I see a lot of tractors driving on the road. We make it as safe as possible. Do we operate it safely? Yes. Do other drivers drive safely? No.
Right. Would it be safer to haul it on a trailer?
Of course it would.
And can the five fifty do that?
Of course.
Do we have a trailer?
We do. The trailer's been out of service since I've started. So the trailer does need some, some work.
Electrical, I think, and, and brakes, but it's a.
Brakes. Yeah, brakes. Yep.
And would a three fifty be able to pull a trailer with that?
Yep.
I will tell you, I was in Manchester the other day and I ended up. Several times at the light next to Taylor Stevenson with his F five fifty, with his ginormous V plow on the front. And. His big sander in it and hauling a trailer with a bunch of stuff on it. And I'm like, that thing is huge. And he drives like I do, like turns green and we go. And it's a diesel, the one he has. But I was like, that's a pretty, that's a meaty truck. I mean, there's a safety component to this for me. I mean, I, I think I'm more in favor of the three fifty size personally, but that's, that's not what matters. I like the idea of our town employees being very safe. I want them, when they're working on the side of the road. Doing whatever the job is to have something that's large enough and bright enough and marked enough that crazy people will not run into them.
Yeah. There isn't a lot of difference size wise. They've got smaller tires, smaller hubs, a little bit smaller brakes on them. On a three fifty as opposed to a five fifty. The transmission's the same transmission, the same motor. The rear ends will be a little bit smaller. They'd be right Dana, eighty rear ends, but they're indestructible. I've got one I can show you that's been torture tested for twenty years. You can't kill them.
Are they significantly less? Do you have any idea?
I don't know price wise, but I know. Maintenance wise, yes. Parts and tires are astronomically more.
Now, if we're only driving it three thousand miles a year.
Yeah.
How long are tires gonna last?
I think we did front tires on this current truck. I, I couldn't tell you a, a time when it was done, but tires have been done on this truck once. And it's a twenty sixteen.
So it's eight years old?
Yep.
Seven to eight years old?
Yep.
So that's probably not going to be our biggest expense. They may dry rot before they wear out.
And there may not be a big difference between a five fifty and a three fifty price wise.
You know, there wasn't with the four fifty and the five fifty. And the reason. The five fifty was chosen was just to try to match the capacity that we have right now. Footprint wise, I mean, there's not that much, not much of a difference between a three fifty, a four fifty or a five fifty.
And you said the warranty was six thousand approximately?
The extended warranty.
Six thousand. So six thousand compared to, I don't know that we've had any year where we've only spent six thousand on this truck.
Year, year one.
So I'm usually a hater of those things, but I, I think. Being a municipality, we're not working on our own equipment and we're having to take it places and we need it. I mean, when it snows, we need it. So it's not just the fifteen thousand we spent on the truck, but now we've paid Scott Horn three storms worth of plowing. And it's, of course, it's not done to the same standard you're going to do it because it's not something he regularly does. And it's, it's stressful and we're constantly running back and forth with the machine, the machine to get it. Right. I'd like to see the bobcat hauled around and not on the side of the road.
Yeah, agreed.
From a safety perspective for, for employees.
That's something you'll have to be careful with too, because you're getting into Class A. Depending on how much you have on it.
It's, it's close, but it should, it should be alright.
If you would have put anything in the back of it, at the point you're over twenty-six thousand pounds with a combination vehicle, even though it's a one ton. It's still considered a Class A. There's, there's several different Class A things. You can, you can get a Class A to just drive that truck, but not drive big trucks. So something to think about that weight.
Right.
So am I hearing between you two that you would like them to price out a three fifty?
I would. I mean, I, it doesn't sound like we're getting anything anytime soon. So I think we have. A little bit of, of time. I don't think. We can, we don't have to rush into this decision.
Available, you, you might be able to find one easier as well, just as an option. That's not a.
Do three fifties come the same way where they're a chassis cab?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Do they come not that way? Like you can just go buy a three fifty?
Yeah, you can buy a, you can buy an F three fifty pickup, like my, my trucks are F three fifties, but they're just single wheel.
Gotcha.
Buy them like that or buy them cabin chassis, however you want them, without whatever length wheelbase you want. Spec mode anyway.
Carol, Steve, anything you want to add?
I, I would echo Sean, I think in, in David probably, but it doesn't, I don't see where we. Why we shouldn't at the very least price out a three fifty and then. You know, maybe that'd give you a chance, Matt, to also just really look hard at pros and cons.
Yeah.
And I'd like to hear that comparison. Makes sense to me.
Does that mean? Go ahead, Carol.
I was just gonna say, I'm good. I'm going to defer to those in the know on this one. Thank you.
I can just keep questioning. So would it use a different sized sander or you're saying you could put the same sander in?
I'd run that two and a half yard sander in my single wheel, run one ton.
It's no last day.
Wouldn't bother me any.
And would you still be able to haul as much in terms of like gravel, like three or four yards in a three fifty?
Boy, I'd done a one ton or even a, even a, that's, that's quite a lot of gravel.
Even on a five fifty is what you're saying?
That, I bet that'd be close to, it's GBW.
It's about, yeah, we, we could carry about ninety-nine hundred pounds of payload in the truck that's specked out.
And of course, if you don't have that much payload, then you're making more trips.
Just running back and forth.
And where do we usually get that kind of material? Is it local or are we driving?
Transfer station. We usually have it delivered. We have like twenty tons delivered for full size dump truck.
Gotcha.
Yep.
We have a stockpile as well.
Yep.
Okay. So. So Eric, what are you hearing and what are you comfortable with us doing?
I mean, I think that if, if you would like to price out a three fifty, I think that's a, a good exercise. I'm not sure that's going to be ultimately the best direction as far as capacity goes, but.
I saw that. I felt so bad.
Sentimental value. I had to come back.
Cause I, I did ask Matt to look at that initially. And it was, it seemed as though it was a sizable drop in capacity. And whether or not that makes a big difference in operations, I, I think it probably would, would have an impact whether it's. What that, what that really is. But anyway, I, I did ask Matt to, to look at that and, you know, the, the. Explanation that was given was that the capacity is, is, is good to have. And the, the cost probably wouldn't be that much less, but I think we can certainly look at that.
Absolutely.
And come back in a couple of weeks with, with a cost comparison and maybe some more. Come back in a couple of weeks with with a cost comparison uh and maybe some more uh information on. You know, the the GBRW component of this and what's gonna work, what's not, whether the trailer ring, the um bobcat and the um. We also have the John Deere tractor that we use for roadside mowing and that's another one that um it's not common. Um but it certainly could be a benefit to be able to move that thing around.
Well, and maybe another resource would be uh since we do business with both contacting Scott Horn and Taylor. Now that you know Taylor has a diesel truck outfitted similarly. Um seeing what his take is like, no, you'll be miserable with a three fifty or yeah, three fifty is probably fine because I know how much you guys do or whatever. I think just maybe getting some more feedback. I think this is really thorough. I think if you use that same format and. I probably wouldn't look quite as far. I mean, you did a lot of research, like ten or twelve dealers.
When you open up that weight category, you open up, you go back down into the GMC and Chevy. Manufacturers and 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 a GMC uh in something we haven't had before. And I don't know if there's any type of bias against Ford or not, but uh when you, when you drop down in weight, you kind of open up your your possibilities a little bit more. Most of the dealers, though, it's. It takes, it takes some time to get trucks. Takes, takes three or four months to get trucks.
Everything's.
Yeah, it takes a while.
I I am. I am biased. I said it when we bought our last truck. GMC and and Chevy products, just they rust faster. They don't have the same build quality that Dodge and Ford have.
Ford's aluminum panels now too.
Great, so um you know, a lot of what we do is pretty harsh travel when you're dumping sand and salt and gravel. And stuff uh so I.
I would definitely stick with the Ford. I might be a little biased, but. I've always said if you wanted to ride good by a GM, if you wanted to work, buy a Ford. They're built for it, but and and you might be, I didn't really think so much about the hauling the gravel path and stuff, you know, so. I was thinking more of the lighter duty stuff that we do.
We were thinking that as well. We were thinking, how do we get away with a smaller truck? Uh and our biggest, our biggest uh factor is is hauling, hauling the gravel.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, that, there's a lot of factors. It just feels like. It doesn't hurt to investigate and just get a full, as full a picture as we can before we spend the money.
Yeah, I mean, even if you, e- even if if for nothing else, if you got the price to just to lay out there and say, is it worth? Not spending twenty five hundred dollars for a five fifty. Would, I think, ease everybody's mind.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think we just wanna know.
And I think if we're looking at twelve to fourteen weeks, you're looking at beginning to middle of May. So if we postpone this two weeks. We're just looking at middle of May to end of May.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll get the information. We'll come back with a uh another, another uh summary.
Sounds good.
But I'll tell you, from my point, looking at what you have here, I would go with your recommendation. I think you did a great job with. Going through everything and you know, if the three fifty comes back and. If the three fifty comes back and we decide not to go with it, do you guys feel that we have enough information here on the five fifty size? Okay, so I I don't want Matt to think it's a wasted exercise here.
No, not long.
No, it's just a question.
Thank you very much.
On the sixteen, would we sell that outright? Is that the plan?
Yeah, we would sell it outright. I I we wouldn't um likely wouldn't, unless we had a dealer that gave us a really good price on trade in. Uh but some of the the numbers they started to throw out were. Ridiculously low, uh you know, half what it's worth. Uh and so we would, uh we have sold vehicles before, um we would do it again.
You're looking for a truck, Dave?
I'd un-lemon it.
Okay, so we will move this forward to our next meeting and hopefully make a decision. So um I think it's safe for Eric. Is it safe for, I'm asking the board now, is it safe for Eric to put this into the budget for the budget committee?
It would, it would be out of this year's budget, so it would just come out of um out of reserves or.
But it would change that reserve picture, so. So I think it's, I think it's okay with the discussion I've heard.
I see what you're saying.
That we're gonna move forward with a truck. It's just which truck. So whatever you need to let the budget committee people know. We're gonna do something.
Gotcha. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry to make something else for you.
Okay, uh two things left on here. Uh twenty four dash zero nine zero, consider first draft the municipal budget, twenty five minutes. And then our last item will be uh discussing the manager's annual review and consideration of a contract. So Eric, on to the budget.
Okay, so I did include um a a full line item budget in your packet. It's uh it it's kind of a of a tangle of a lot of different things. Uh there's a few reasons for that, but I will start by saying that that it does include a line item dollar value for nearly every. Item in the budget, right? So it it is essentially a complete budget. What's lacking is um uh some consistency around. Um how it used to look, um and there's reasons for that, but a a big piece is that we have numbers that are still coming in. I got two. Three committee budgets today. I'm still waiting on a couple more. Um so some of these are placeholder numbers. There's uh things in there that are. Uh the same as last year, uh but we did uh put a lot of time into getting this together into this form. Um the budget's always kind of a a amorphous thing for a while until it starts to pull together and solidify. Uh and we're at that period now where um we have some information, we're waiting on other information. We still don't have uh the audit. But that should be coming in a couple of weeks. Um things like that can make a really big difference uh in how well we can, we can. Pull the budget together and prioritize, but uh what I wanted to show was that we were making good progress. Um and I wanna talk a little bit uh tonight about some of the things that have changed and and how the budget is going to be different this year. Uh because this is the first budget cycle that we've gone through with our new set of accounts. Um and that's proved to be, you know, a- as any new system is, a little bit challenging to figure out exactly what goes where. Uh and we're still working on that with the auditor, make sure that um that how we represent things in the budget. Uh is consistent with their expectations, but also that when we do put things in the budget, that um. Uh that we also have a town meeting warrant that accurately and reflects. The things that need to be in the budget and the things that don't, because some, you know, this uh accounting that we're looking at. Really focuses on appropriation or excuse me, raising uh uh of money. The, one of the reasons we switched over was because we were having a lot of ups and downs, a lot of variability in the budget. And a lot of that came down to capital expenditures, big expenditures. It would happen once every ten years, once every twenty or maybe once every five. But in any event, those, those were causing a lot of variability in the budget. Uh we also had things that we were spending money on. Um that it looked like we were spending about twice as much as we actually were. Two prime examples are the transfer station where we have about forty. Forty-five percent uh of the cost of that, uh and also the um. Code enforcement where we have about fifty percent of that cost, uh but we were budgeting for the full expense and 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 then showing revenue coming back in. Uh and that inflated what people saw as far as our municipal expenditures. So the the new accounting system really puts a premium. On just showing tax impacts, uh because a lot of people wanna know what is gonna do to my taxes. Uh and so this, this new accounting um focuses on that. It also um acknowledges that we have things that we. Uh appropriate, so when you, a lot of the phrases you'll hear are raise and appropriate or just appropriate. Raise and appropriate means that we are raising the money out of taxes and putting it towards a purpose. The appropriation piece is just using resources that we already have and putting those towards something. Um and those things tend to be the capital projects, so the the budget will show differently in that area. Um and so you'll see some areas like the capital uh improvements line, um it's all zeros this year because. With with rare exception, but um most of that has moved into. It'll stay in the warrant and we will get approval to move that money to use for that purpose, but it won't actually show. In the, in the budget, because what we would normally do is show the expense. For that item and then also show the revenue, but the revenue is coming from the reserve, so it gets to be a little bit circular and again, it inflates that budget. So what we're doing um is keeping things simpler, cleaner. Um still allowing for the full public visibility through the warrant process, still talking about this. Uh with an added emphasis on the capital investment plan, the 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 way that we're looking at this and working with this new budget. Uh process really does put a premium on the, on the capital planning element, uh and that's coming up January thirty first. Uh I didn't men- mention that at the start of the meeting here, but we have January thirty first is our a capital investment plan uh joint meeting with the select board and budget committee. Uh and then we also have this Wednesday, the twenty fourth um is our um uh first uh. Proper budget committee meeting where we're talking about several departments, uh and I'll go through some of the same information then, but. Uh that's really a little bit of notes on the budget process. I also did wanna note that um another change that affects how we budget is that. At least as of this year and going forward, unexpended operating money. Um so if, say, the fire department puts in fifty thousand for wages, they only spend twenty five. Uh that twenty five used to go and roll right into the capital reserve automatically. Um but that's not going to be happening anymore because A, it wasn't necessarily uh clear or transparent that money was going into that reserve. Um and it also kind of led to sloppy budgeting in some cases. Uh so what we'll be doing going forward is we'll be, that money will roll into the general fund. We can then appropriate it from there. To use for other purposes, but it'll be in the general fund. Uh and what that's gonna mean is that we will likely have more use of. Capital or excuse me, of of undesigned fund balance and less use of the designated fund balances because. That cash flow has changed a little bit. Um so those are just a few notes on the, on the process. Uh specific things that I wanted to point out um before we get into a more of a discussion about anything really that relates to the budget. We do expect a healthy increase in property values, uh and by that I mean uh about one percent. Um and that's not a factor issue, that's, that's actually the increase in value, uh which means that uh we have that capacity to either. Uh you know, have a little bit higher expenditures and not have a affect taxes, or there could be a um, you know. A a lessening, but that's not what I expect. I expect is that we'll have that money available to help offset increased costs that we are certainly facing. Um one of the major revenue streams that we have is excise tax. That revenue stream, I'm starting with revenue um and and um. You know, the, the, the property value is one of our revenue streams. Uh the other item is, is the excise tax. That unfortunately is dropping. Uh because uh vehicle sales are flagging a little bit, so we had last year had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Estimated for revenue for excise tax. I think we're probably gonna be just under that, maybe ten thousand, maybe twenty thousand this year. Uh hard to say, we're only about seven months through the year, but um i- it's, it's slowing down and unless things pick up, we're gonna stay. A little bit below that, so we're gonna be budgeting less for that. So that's fifty thousand dollars right there in revenue that we don't have. We're increasing our revenue in other areas. Our investment income is probably gonna increase fifty thousand dollars over last year, so that's a positive. Uh but um we're also um. Uh ag- again, that note about designated reserves, I I said that earlier. Uh we do expect to see a six or eight percent increase in both the county budget and the school budget. Um and just a reminder, the county budget's about five percent of our budget, so that's not terribly impactful. Um but six or eight percent increase is still sizable. Uh the RSU budget, we expect also a six to eight percent increase and that's seventy five. Percent of our budget, so um that's a a big hit for for us. Um doesn't mean that we should be changing how we have. Uh look at municipal expenditures because we can't control what they bill us, but uh it's something to think about. We also expect an increase with the municipal budget, I'm guessing around five percent. Uh but that's still very amorphous at this point. We have to pull a lot of things together to get a final number there. But um one of the reasons for that is we do have a five percent increase scheduled through the union contract. Um uh for uh those employees and that's mirrored to all of our other employees. So we are labor intensive, just like the RSU, so that five percent is gonna be a big part of what we see for expenditures. Um increasing. Another item uh that's worth noting is the cost of third party service providers. Uh we're seeing everybody say. You know, get, send us letters, friendly letters, hey, uh just a reminder, we're increasing your fees. Uh we get one of those almost every week now, uh and it's usually two to five percent, uh sometimes more. Um I'm not sure what's gonna happen with uh essential services like ambulance, but we also expect an increase there. Uh so just the point is that we're seeing increases and we're trying our best to offset those with um. With some additional revenues, but the revenues aren't as strong as they were in the past, so there's, the the math doesn't quite look work in our favor there. Some additional things that we're looking at are um some additional time for the transfer station. Uh that's. In order to account for the actual uh experience that we've had uh with needing to have coverage at the facility. What, what we've tried to get away from is using our maintenance staff to cover at the transfer station. Yes, we're reimbursed for that, but it really affects our ability to 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 operate because then those guys aren't out doing road work. They're not working on the buildings, they're at the transfer station. Uh at a higher rate of pay, I'll know than um and higher skill level than. Having a transfer station attendant there. So there's value, I think, in intelligence in doing that, but that's gonna add a little bit to the budget. The big um labor piece that we're looking at is uh the addition of a part-time seasonal. Community programming coordinator that Sean and David have been looking into. Right now I have that as a placeholder for about halftime. Uh and I think the net cost of that is probably gonna be about twenty thousand dollars. So in the grand scheme of the budget. It's not that big of a deal, but from a policy perspective, it's something that we'll wanna talk about and consider. I think the value's there, I'll say that right out. I think it's. Even if it costs fifty, it'd probably be worth it, but um that's gonna be something that we're gonna talk about and have to explain to people. Um because it's, it's, it is new. Uh and the last item I had that I wanted to talk about was just the fact that we do see. Um and I think need significant increases in our road budget, um both for maintenance and for uh capital. Uh we're seeing the cost of paving go up, we're seeing the cost of capital work go up, we're seeing increases in the amount of damage we're having from storms. We need to invest in our infrastructure uh to protect the the significant amount of money the taxpayers have put in already over the past fifteen years. Uh when we rebuilt our roads, so. Those things are coming together. We do have some reserves that we can use to offset some of those, but we wanna be careful. Because again, those aren't being funded out of um uh out of um excess operating revenues anymore. The net impact will be about the same, but there's gonna be a delay uh in how we can apply some of those funds, but. Uh that's my really, my my high level summary of the budget, uh and I'm happy to take in questions about the process. Or um any specific areas that you all want to talk about.
So um when you're justifying the programming position. Um I think it would be worthwhile to take into account what you may have already done. On what will be removed from town office staff that will allow them. More time to do other tasks that they need to do or that can be delegated, say, from you to them because they're not spending. All this time doing these programming functions.
Absolutely, yeah, that's qualitative more than dollar value just because they have a fixed budget and, yeah, but.
But I think it needs to be mentioned so that people understand there's, there's more to it than just that what initially you see.
That's a very good point, yeah. And hoping that we can all be engaged in in talking about that position and hopefully advocating for it if we agree it's a good idea. Uh because I don't necessarily wanna be seen as the guy driving a, 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 a program. Uh I think that it needs to be a, a, you know, a collaborative effort, so.
I, I think.
I think it can potentially fund itself.
Right. And as we've talked about previously, um it's a select board decision, I guess, to authorize you. To make a change like that, not the budget committee decision, so. Their just, their job is to talk about the money aspect of it. Um so I think that once Eric comes back to us with what he think. What he deems as a viable figure, at that point, we should give him our support or not our support. Um so that he can say to the budget committee and to the public, the select board approves of this for X, Y, and Z. Um and then you're not out there on your own, and if we don't approve of it, then you will be out there on your own.
I I wasn't suggesting that I would be, I I just um, you know, um wanna make sure that that we do have it with all these policy discussions. That 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 it it happens in that way.
But I, I think the sooner, once you get us that number, I'd like to see us handle that, that. At that meeting so that um it's clear to people that there is or is not support.
Yeah, and I think they won't have to do the same thing with um the fairgrounds project and the sidewalk project, uh because both of those are sizable. Um a- and I mean, ultimately, they're both ironically less impactful financially than this. Um position would be, but they're big dollar numbers and and that's gonna be important, you know, to 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 bring those things. To, to, to bring those things forward and talk about them, uh, you know, in that way as well.
So I think this is a great first pass at the budget on. It's, it's really, i- it just shows that we're there and that we're working on it. But there's really nothing to discern now because I assume every number there is changeable at this point in time.
Absolutely, and it will remain so for, for at least a month, if not a little bit longer, and you, the, the select board always has a. Um, a little bit extra room to, to make changes, the boards and committees, we expect them to come to the table first. Yeah. Uh, and present, and the staff to come and present uh, their proposals, and then we move it through the process, but.
So, so our job right now is really just to sort of watch that and be aware of, of things, and if something looks like it's outrageous, either low or high. Uh, to question that, but not to be alarmed by it, it currently. Um, and just a reminder that we are meeting on Wednesday next week.
Correct.
Thirty first with the budget committee to talk about the capital improvement plan. Uh, which is our long-term budget, so. Um, and I, the new truck should be included in that because if we're gonna have a payment.
And I, I think it'll be, I mean, even with the three fifty, we're probably talking at least seventy-five thousand, uh, all in. Um, but uh, because I mean, as anybody that's bought a pickup truck knows, uh, you know, you get, you get the chrome package and you're up to sixty-five just to. Just for a pickup truck, so, yeah.
Right, right, um, and it's an eight-year-old truck, so, I mean. We didn't expect to pay for it now, but getting an eight-year newer truck is gonna be good for everybody.
Yeah.
Carol has question?
Oh, a lot of them, I, uh, we have a meeting this Wednesday too, don't we?
This Wednesday?
No, the budget committee does.
The budget committee does, not us with the budget, that's the next week, thank you.
That's the next week, yeah, correct.
Okay, I just have a, a bunch of different things that looking through, um, just raises questions. Um, one thing, the E car, it said something like we don't have a lease anymore, so what? What's the status of that, is it gone from the lot, cause I don't see it parked where it normally was?
No, it got moved for snow removal, but uh, the, the lease runs out in June, um, so what we're gonna do, I mean, I, 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 we'll talk about it later, but my recommendation. I guess I shouldn't say what we're gonna do, uh, my recommendation is that we uh, pay the um, end of lease fee of four hundred dollars and move it off a lot. Um, uh.
Trade it in towards the one ton.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the, I did look at the um, the trade-in value rate, or the, 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 the purchase price of that right now relative to the lease. I thought, you know, maybe there would be um, um, uh, some value there, but uh, it's, it's less. Um, what we could sell it for is less than what the lease is, so there's no reason to hold on to it. Um, we saved thousands of dollars in mileage, no question. Um, and we may want, excuse me, at some point in the future to look at. Uh, you know, some kind of a, a town vehicle for the code officer, uh, and, and training and things like that for staff. But that vehicle at this point isn't it, uh, and so I, I'd recommend that when the lease comes up, uh, we let go of it, and I have included mileage. In the budget for um, staff, town staff, uh, transfer station staff and the code officer. To account for the, the change in having to go back to paying for mileage, so.
Okay, um, I did notice, um, we had, I think, a twelve-point-five percent dip in heating, but then like a slight uptick in electric, is that the?
Heat pumps, yep.
Thank you, that's great. I, I, then the uptick in electric didn't even come close, so that's, that's good, that's showing.
Part of the reason for that is we over-budgeted last year for fuel oil prices because we were scared, basically, and we, I think everybody was. Uh, so we budgeted pretty high and our, our experience is coming in at less than that, so I think it's gonna be um, sustainable to have that. Um, fairly lower, you know, twelve percent, like you said, uh, heating cost for oil. And then maybe a, you know, a small increase for electric, I think that's gonna work out.
Okay, um, I, I'm just, questions like things that just look a little bit out of sorts, um. Like there was a page nineteen, conservation board increased two hundred and seventeen percent. You know what?
Small numbers, um, uh, so the, the, uh, they have like a three thousand dollar budget. Uh, and actually, that was a placeholder budget, I got their um, final budget this morning. Uh, so, and, and it, they took out the, they had a mushroom farm proposal in there. Um, that um, has been a hot topic, uh, as Jaren can attest to, uh, at the, at the. Um, at the conservation commission meetings, but apparently it was taken out. Uh, and so the nine thousand of that, uh, of those dollars were actually for, um, what would have been a mycelium. Um, something or other, uh, uh, farming proposal. Uh, I, I think it's an interesting concept, I think I'd like to see if, if they pursue it. Um, ha- have it, uh, maybe perhaps have it on town pro- property, but without town dollars. Um, I think that if we were like a national park, we could lease our, uh, birch trees that are unhealthy or to, to be used for mushroom growing. Uh, and then we would collect ten percent of the revenue from the profits, um, but the proposal that came forward was more of a. Um, you pay everything upfront, and then if they're not stolen, you get your money back. I wasn't entirely comfortable with that, but um, in any event, long story short is. They took that proposal out, so we really don't have to worry about it right now, and their next budget will be much more in line with past budgets.
Okay, thank you, and it's just like twenty twenty-three is like a big ten thousand dollars, something or another, but that's old news. Um. And something like that, you know, I think we talked about a, a small garden at the high school and involved the students, that sounds like. One of those projects maybe that could be kind of interesting, I don't know if that's an appropriate place, but anyway, um. Capital improvements municipal, there was a page thirty-four, seven hundred thousand plus, if I was reading it right. Um, capital improvements and it said municipal, page thirty-four. Seven hundred thousand, and I wasn't sure what that was for.
I'm not sure if you um, had heard both Eric and I saying that this is really just kind of a placeholder budget, so.
Well, so in the, um, but I, I, I'm not, that seven hundred thousand must have been from last fiscal year, I, I don't know if we have anything that big this year.
Okay.
Really certainly don't.
Okay, good, cause it was like twenty twenty-four year-to-date though, so it's like huh?
Oh, yeah, no, year-to-date, that's absolutely uh, correct, that was, we probably, uh, either for the fire truck purchase or. Uh, we spent uh, several hundred thousand on roadwork, so, yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, couple of things, where did open space go, I horse scoured it for that, um, and I didn't see, except. There was, I think, a couple of pages, page thirty-one, it was a zero, page nineteen, it was a zero, so what happened to that?
Uh, so the money's in the bank, uh, the money is in the reserve, um, that we allocated over the last two years, this current year. Um, I, I'm going to be recommending, I think, a small, a ten thousand dollar allocation, uh, if at all. Uh, but so far, that's not in the budget yet.
Okay, all right, um.
And are the reserves, the reserves were not listed in this budget?
No, again, cause that's part of what we're doing is moving.
Right.
Things that are big, like capital or large operating, or large capital budgets, uh, special revenue budgets, like the solid waste. Um, that's being moved in part or in whole out of the operating budget.
Right, thank you.
Okay, and then there was like, um, transfer station, there was a huge health insurance drop in cost and wages, did something happen? I, I like, are we doing something different there that?
Um, I'll have to look at the health insurance one, that should have been an increase, um, but wages uh, should be up, uh, oh, no, no, sorry. Y- yes, you're a hundred percent right, um, so we did see an increase in our actual um, liability. But what you're seeing there is the fact that we are no longer showing the full cost for all three member towns. Now we're only budgeting for Reed Field shares, so it looks like we're seeing dramatic drops in all areas, almost all areas. But it's not a real, um, that's not real.
Okay, thanks, cause it was like half, and then. Um, wages were down like a hundred thousand, and I was like, I don't understand that.
That would be exactly right, because Wayne and um, Fayette are like forty-nine percent and we're fifty-one percent.
Yeah.
Uh, tho- those two together make that up.
Changed, but yeah.
It's all the accounting shifts that will become more apparent once all the numbers are entered.
Yep, and I'll have to explain them a lot.
And then I think it had RSU is up eighteen-point-eight percent maybe, and it looked like.
Uh, should have been only eight percent, I budgeted, and, and I think what I'm gonna do actually, um, and I, I've done this in the past. Is hold those numbers flat until we get numbers from the county and from the school. That way it doesn't show our budget as being astronomically larger, uh, because an eight percent increase in the school budget adds. Tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, it, it adds hundreds of thousands of dollars to our bottom line.
So Carol, I think what you're seeing is the, it, oh, this is on page thirty-seven, it says it's a ten percent increase in the payment. But why would that correlate to an eighteen percent on the very right side, Eric?
I'd have to look at that, I'll, I'll make a note to look at the um, education funding, but like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop it back to zero change, um, from last year until we have. Um, but I'll look at that, see what that is.
Cause it went from essentially four million to four-point-eight million, so ten percent would have been four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, so. Could have been a typo.
This was a really scary percent, eighteen percent, that's like.
Yeah, let's, let's hope they do better than that.
It could be, it could be, because they're coming off of all of that pandemic funding now. There won't be any of it left in the next budget, so.
And are we on that topic, thanks for the segue, Catherine, um, are we including any discussion in the budget this year of what we might do with what? We have in that. Pocket of extra change that um, does have to be dealt with at some point or dealt with at some point, is that something that's part of this discussion?
That comes later, right, Eric?
Oh, um, what's the question, I'm sorry?
I think she's asking about ARPA funds.
Oh, yeah, so, so th- those will, those will be discussed during the budget, um, or the, um, the joint capital reserve budget mission, commission meeting. Um, but my, my recommendation is that those uh, ARPA funds be applied to the sidewalk project. Um, a- and there's a few different reasons for that, one uh, is that I think that we could use them for other purposes. Uh, but um, the fairgrounds, for example, we wouldn't be eligible for a, for a match for those funds. But also, just flatly, I think that um, the, the sidewalk project is, is probably as important uh, as the fairgrounds project. But I think it's a lot less likely to be approved if it didn't have some matching funds coming in. Um, I think that uh, having ARPA applied to that is a, is a very viable and valid use under the intent of that money. Uh, but also um, would cover the cost of, of that improvement, uh, I think fully, uh, which would be really nice. So that's my recommendation on that, but we'll talk more about it later.
Okay, cause on, on that subject, I didn't know, um. Uh, we can talk about it, I think, later, but I was hoping maybe some kind of update to the beach playground or something that would be a safe. Place for, for kids, um, I don't know if that would be worthy of any kind of. Um, matching funds or anything like that, but ARPA was all about safe gathering and. Uh, spaces like that, so that's what I was talking about, we've talked about it off and on the last couple of years, but. Um, that's a whole nother project, um, I just didn't know if that would be worthy of consideration, but we can talk about that later.
We have to spend the ARPA funds by a certain date, and we decided this year we weren't doing any new projects, so we're not working on developing the beach. Currently.
Okay.
And if, if we do that next year, we wouldn't be funding it till the year after, and that's way past the ARPA deadline.
Yeah, but we, we, I think it's a good point, Carol, though, and I would recommend that we put in some planning funds to help do the work. So that we can have a, a, you know, a, a well-thought-out, kinda like the fairgrounds, uh, project that, that meets community needs, so I'm glad you brought that up. Cause that, that is a viable, long-term need.
Great, are you all set, Carol?
I am, thanks.
Great, okay, are we all good on the budget? All right, then let's move on to item twenty-four dash zero nine one, discuss the town manager annual review and consideration of a contract renewal. And Sean told me that was sent to us via email.
This is the very end of the packet, too.
Yes, it is at the end of the packet?
Yeah, is, yeah, so what happened, I'll, I'll just tell you what happened with that, um, I, I had um, printed off the packet on Friday night. Um, and uh, the printer ran out of paper, so I'd scanned in the, the document, but not realized the last several pages were missing, so then I went back. Um, printed the rest of it off, uh, but then when in my shuffle had lost that middle page. Uh, anyway, I added it this afternoon, I also emailed it to you, so I hope you've had time to look at it.
Alright, well, yes, I looked at it, um, and so I'm good. Uh, so, let's see, we held an executive session earlier today for the purpose of. Uh, the town manager's evaluation, annual evaluation, which the public was aware of, we had posted. Um, our intent to do that and had posted public comment on the uh, survey monkey. Or contacting the town office, so those were all looked at, reviewed and discussed by the select board. And then we had a meeting with the town manager where we discussed our findings and. Uh, made recommendations or suggestions for recommendations. And we have a proposed contract uh, before us, if anyone would like to make a motion.
Is it as simple as say, I would make a motion to approve the contract as presented?
It could be.
Do you want more specifics, you need numbers?
As discussed.
As discussed.
Yes, because we discussed a change.
Yeah.
Should we, is, should we be specific about that change?
Yep.
It's perfectly fine, it's public record right now, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The contract is always public.
Right, so I just needed, needed to know if that was gonna be in the motion.
Yes.
And so that, that change is that, um, in addition to the, um. So if the, if the town manager is dismissed without cause, he would receive six months severance and half. Year salary, six-month salary, and um, and if he's a, and if he was to leave. He would also give the town six months' notice, both those things are in there.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there a discussion, Carol?
I, I just wanted to double-check with Eric, he's okay with that? Three months prior notice, that doesn't seem short.
Uh, six months, um, I mean, i- i- I think that's um, uh, that, that's fine, again, I think that with this type of thing, um, it would be. If there was a need for something less, uh, it could be discussed and negotiated, you're all reasonable people. Um, a- and so I think that i- if there was a need, that could be, but um, I think that's a very strong and fair. Uh, condition, um, so that we have equal notice uh, for one another, so.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to say that I, um. Voice a little bit of concern with the severance package, but I, cause I didn't wanna set precedence for future town managers, and I don't think that's going to be an issue. Um, but we, as a group, decided on, on the present proposal, so, um. It's good, I don't think we'll have to go there, though.
Hopefully not.
Um, so I'll just, for the record, say that the uh, review for the town manager uh, was exemplary. Um, there were a couple of suggestions made about some items that could possibly be considered. Um, realizing that all persons have the ability to improve. Uh, but when you're doing a really fantastic job, it's hard to have improvement, um, so we are expecting continued. Awesome work. In all categories, from vendors, boards and committees, employees and community members. Um, all of the findings were, or all the responses were very positive. Uh, stating that we're very lucky to have our town manager and hope that he will continue with us. Um, with lots of different anecdotal statements made, um, with a few, very few suggestions made. So, uh, the select board feels grateful for Eric. And for what he contributes to the town and has contributed to the town and the things that he's had to deal with. Uh, and we are very pleased to offer this uh, contract renewal, which extends his contract for a further year. So he is now under a new three-year contract. Anybody have anything else to say? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving this contract, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Carol?
And yes, yes.
Yes, I didn't forget, yay. Um, and then the last item on the agenda is if there's any further business, does anybody have anything they want us to consider in the future? Just double-checking, Sean and Eric, are we meeting tomorrow at noon?
Yes, we are, we are, yeah.
We are, is that good, Sean?
Yep.
Yep, okay, that's to plan our next meeting, and we will see everybody at six-thirty for the budget committee meeting, and is that scheduled for two hours, Eric?
Uh, I'm not sure we have a firm end time, but um, I will make uh, uh, an effort to put it at two hours.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think six-thirty to eight-thirty is good, and uh, that's a joint budget select board for the capital improvements.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, January thirty-first, yeah, we're in the busy time, okay.
Yes, we are.
Motion to adjourn thirty seconds early?
So moved.
So seconded.
Third.
Thirty.
All those in favor? Thank you, Carol.
Thanks for.
Thank you.